The September 10th, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present we have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, and Mr. Peterson. I ask you to all please rise for the pledge and just remain standing for a moment of silence, just in memorial of 9/11. Mr. Dwyer, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. I know we had a meeting in August, but it really didn't feel like the first meeting of the school year. Now that the kids are back, it feels like this is the first meeting of the school year. And I'm excited to welcome everybody back, excited to once again welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Cummings. We have some new staff here, our interim deputy superintendent, Ms. Gottesman. And our new headmaster of Fairfield Ward, Mr. Cavanna, welcome. Anybody else I'm missing? New here? Well, if I am, I'm sorry. Welcome. To those watching at home, new teachers, welcome. We're excited that you're here. And let's get started. Public comment. If any members of the public would like to give comment on agenda items, I ask you to please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. We're going to start off with Sustainable Fairfield Task Force. We have Ms. Hoag and who's presenting? Superintendent Cummings, do you have anything to add to this to start in the introduction or just let the committee present?
No, I will let the committee present. Thank them for being here tonight.
Just ask you to state your name for the record.
Yes, hi. Scott Thompson with the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force. And I'm here with Mary Hoag from the Task Force and Daphne Dixon as well. We're all volunteers for this town committee. Thank you so much for having us on the agenda. I think it was kind of short notice, so hopefully you got our little slide deck and Mary put some other materials together. But the primary purpose for us to be here tonight is to invite you all to attend our fifth annual Green Wheels Expo. It is going to be held this Saturday. We're back to our old venue, so this is the fifth time we've had this event. And in the past, actually last year, we had it at Ward High School, but we've moved back to the train station overflow lot on Mill Plain Road. And again, this Saturday for the cameras, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And, you know, why do we do this event? You know, greenhouse gas emissions for our planet are about, from transportation sector, about 14 percent. Doesn't sound like that big of a deal, but it's important. In the U.S., it is about 32 percent of the greenhouse gas emissions from the country, from our share. And when you get to Connecticut, where we drive a lot because we're so suburban, that number climbs to 40 percent. So we're well above the national average. And so for an individual trying to take action, looking at greener ways of getting around is really important. So this is why this has become our premier event, and we do this once a year. We're going to have lots of private vehicle owners that will exhibit, and they are really the best people to talk to about what it's like to drive an electric car. We're also going to have electric bikes. We'll have electric Vespas this year. That's kind of exciting. We're going to have some electric motorcycles. We'll have electric lawn equipment. We'll even have a very quiet but powerful leaf blower that will be there. So if you don't like the noisiness in your neighborhood of all those leaf blowers, come check out the super quiet but powerful electric one. There'll be stuff for kids to do, kids' activities, and we're featuring Pop Centric as one of our food vendors, and the other one is Mini Munch.
Mini Munch Truck.
Mini Munch Truck.
And they're actually, and they're actually an electric truck. So it's a food vendor, but the truck is actually electric.
So we will be conducting this event also as a zero-waste event, so folks are encouraged to bring their own water bottles, and Aquarian will be providing water. And everything that comes from our food vendors will be compostable. Curbside Compost will be there, running the composting station. So again, we invite you all to come. There's another catch to this on the next slide. If you're not looking ahead, you're in suspense. And we would also ask anything you can do, if you know anyone that's shopping for a car, or if you have outlets through social media to help us get the word out, we'd really appreciate anything you can do to spread the word on this. So the centerpiece of this year's event is the city of White Plains will be bringing an electric school bus. And it's going to come up courtesy of the city, the school district, and the operator, National Express Transit. And they just put five of these buses into operation in White Plains. And so we're really excited, into White Plains this school year, so literally like a week. Yeah.
Hate to interrupt, but why is the door on the wrong side?
Uh, I don't know. Good question.
Could have flipped the image.
It might be a, that might be my, that might be my bad PowerPoint skills. I might have flipped the image.
The stop sign is the steering, is this the bus that they're bringing, do you know?
This is, this is a picture I got off the Internet. So, yeah, we're going to take pictures of the bus.
I'm going to interrupt the floor.
No, no. It's a great, it's a great question. Good question.
Looks like a, it looks like a.
It could be.
It says White Plains.
Or an emergency exit. We're so inquisitive.
So, so we now have definitely the first question to ask them. The, it's fun, we've been planning this for a while, and the bus gets 65 miles of range and the trip is about 32 miles up from White Plains. So we're not going to send them home with just a mile to spare. We're going to have them plug in at the event. We have a Level 2 charger there in the parking lot. So what's important here is for you to be aware that at this point in time, we're now seeing the emergence of this technology. So electric cars have been around for about 10 years, and they're pretty mature, and, you know, anyone that has experienced them will, can attest that they're very competitive when it comes to comparing them to conventional cars. But electric buses are really just starting to emerge and be available to the market. So it's an exciting inflection point with electric transit. There's a strong case to be made for switching away from what we use today, which is diesel. And I don't want to drag everyone down because this is supposed to be a lighthearted thing, but, you know, diesel has got over 40 known carcinogenic substances in it. That particulate, that soot, it's a nice name, soot. It's really bad stuff. I just took this picture, you see that little picture on the curb? That's literally across the street from my house. And a bus was, not a bus, it was another piece of equipment that was idling there. It had a deflector shield, just like our buses. Our buses in Fairfield actually don't direct the diesel flow directly back. They have a deflector shield that directs it toward the ground. But after a month, that soot stain had not gone away. And that's, that's really telling because once that particulate gets inhaled by our children, by our residents, by anyone, it doesn't come out. It is very adhesive to lung tissue. It doesn't come off of concrete after a month of some heavy storms. It's linked to a whole number of diseases. It's a who's who of disease, and again, I'm not trying to drag everyone down here, but I provided some links if you want to look at the backup where the toxicologists are getting this information. Back to the exciting part here, though. We are really seeing announcement after announcement of electric school buses in our country. I'd say maybe three or four years it's been focused on city buses, but now school buses are primary and in the mix. California is spending $70 million on school buses. I mentioned White Plains. Massachusetts just finished their pilot, and we received a presentation from the project manager from that pilot, our task force received that. It was, it was quite successful, and they're looking to take it to the next scale. Really exciting, that last point. Dominion Energy announced that they are going to deploy over 1,000 school buses in Virginia. Why does an energy company want to do that? Well, they can use the school buses during summer months as grid storage so that as more renewable energy gets deployed on the grid, these buses are what we call vehicle-to-grid, and they help keep the grid stable when the sun is making extra solar, the wind is making extra wind. The energy company's actually paying for this. And so that's a key part of the economics, and we're really excited to see that school buses are going to be part of what we call the smart grid. And that's something that's critical for the transformation of our infrastructure. So to kind of wrap up here, why electric school buses? Well, first and foremost, the technology is finally here. And so if anyone feels bad about why we haven't switched to this point, please don't. The options weren't available to you, but they are now, and so now we kind of have feet to the fire, really, really no excuse for not wanting to look forward to this switch the next time we renew our bus contracts. Bus, school buses have very short and predictable routes. Of course, they don't idle. They're extremely quiet. Electric equipment is much more economical from a fuel economy standpoint. There's almost no maintenance involved with electric buses. And there are many grants and incentives out there. A lot of this is being driven by the Volkswagen diesel emissions cheating scandal. I think that's where California's getting their money. I didn't even have it on my list, but Washington State is using their VW diesel money for electric school buses. And so lifecycle cost, we're looking at things that are comparable for the operation of a school bus, but when you factor in the capital opportunities, either from grants or incentives, or the grid storage funding, that levels the playing field from a capital perspective. So now, now you're just saving money over the lifecycle. And of course, I think we all would like to stop exposing, have this route of exposure to our children. They're very sensitive receptors. There's been a lot of stuff in the news about potential routes of exposure in ball fields and playgrounds because of the fill, contaminated fill issue. And I would argue that I would be actually quite more concerned about an ongoing exposure from direct, direct air inhalation than the field. So let's please think about this in our, in our planning going forward. So what can we do? First, our task force will be, we've sent some information today, but we're going to compile resources on our website for those of you that would like to learn more about the technology and learn more about the effects of diesel as well, see some of the other studies that I've referenced. And then we would like to offer the opportunity to maybe meet some of the technology providers so that you can understand and ask them questions. And this is over the coming years. I'm not going to be here coming back to you every month with an update, but I would propose over the coming years, this is a process that needs to be planned for and can be integrated into the program. And by doing so, you express and signal an interest to the bus operating community that this is the direction that Fairfield would like to head, that we're done with diesel, we're done with this route of exposure, and we're leaning ahead toward this new and available technology. We will work with Public Works to start having conversations with UI about the grid storage opportunities. And then really what this is about is the next time the bus operating contracts renew, and I think they were just rebid at the beginning of this calendar year or maybe at the end of last calendar year. I tried to find out, you guys probably know, I think they're five-year contracts, so it might, maybe they're, no?
Last one was a two-year.
Okay, two years? So, boy, we better hurry up then, so.
I think you might have missed the cycle this time.
Yeah, we definitely missed the cycle, and we were actually, at that point, pushing for propane, and, because that was really all that was available to us. But I'm glad that didn't happen, quite frankly. That was a blessing in disguise, and really what we should be is leaning forward to the electric transit. There's some time to plan the infrastructure, but we have good places to park these buses and putting in, the infrastructure can be done pretty simply, and that means, you know, vehicle charging. And that's, that's all I have. I'd be happy to take any, any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Gerber.
Thanks so much for this presentation. It was really informative. I guess one question you brought up at the end, talking about the charging stations, and so how exactly would that work in terms of, you know, if we did at some point in the future move towards electric buses? Like, how, just how expensive is it to install and just how, what are the logistics, I guess, behind it?
So, yeah, short answer is I don't know yet, but it's something that I hope to learn and be able to come back and report to you. But there would be simply a bank of EV charging stations located where the buses park, and they would plug in overnight. It probably is sensible to have these be what we call Level 2 chargers. That means they can come in as low as they need to and be fully charged the next morning. And then a Level 3 would be if, for any reason during the day, a bus needed to get a quick charge, it might make sense to have one of those. The, the charging infrastructure could be undertaken as, for example, as a capital project by the town, or it could be undertaken through some partnership with the operator. And so I think those, both of those options would need to be explored. And the, we hope to learn some more, actually. That's one of my, that's going to be my second question for White Plains, is what did they put in in terms of vehicle charging infrastructure? But simply, you plug it in at the end of the day, and in the morning, it's fully charged.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Yeah, I had a question about the charging infrastructure as well, because as you might recall, when we were talking about the charging infrastructure with the solar ports at the two high schools. Ultimately, I think the board was in favor, but I know that you had faced some resistance from the Board of Finance. So I'm only thinking that as we get closer to that point, it might be good to have a presentation like this prior to our asking money, for money, you know, budgetary support so that their questions and concerns can be heard ahead of time and grappled with before a planned rollout gets voted down or something like that, just as a suggestion, because I think it's a great idea. A couple of questions regarding the actual Green Wheels Expo. Asma, if you could speak more so that in terms of social media posting, what, besides food, what is there for children to do?
Well, let's see. We have a scavenger hunt, so we'll be directing them with questions, and they'll have to go to different parts of the area so that'll get them to fully explore with their parents. We have a couple of hands-on things to explain, help them understand the decisions about energy and transportation. So, for instance, we have some seashells that have been soaked in a very acid, like vinegar water. And that's to show that when you emit carbon dioxide, it's getting absorbed in the ocean, which is causing acidification. And that in turn is actually decreasing the thickness of the shells of the creatures in the ocean. So they're actually, you know, so this is a very extreme example, but you can actually visually see that kind of stuff. We can make T-shirt reusable bags, you know, things like that, all hands-on, at really any age, not necessarily one, you know, little kids. Does that help?
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, in terms of trying to say, you know, this is something that you should take children to, and here are some of the things that they're doing, I just think it helps, that's why I just asked.
Oh, of course, thank you.
And then I was wondering if you'd reached out to some of the high school science or middle school science courses, is there any tie-in to them or any draw to their students to come and see anything in particular?
Not necessarily the science, but I have been connecting with Paul and Greg and even middle school. And funny, you should ask, I wanted to just say that we have a Sunrise group. I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but we, they had their first meeting this week. And it's a group related to activism, related to the environment. And so I did talk with, I did explain we were having that with them as well. The colleges, yes, the colleges are also invited.
Great. And then my last question, just in general informational, where, you've highlighted four states, where in general is Connecticut in compared to these other states? You've got four that seem to be leading the pack. How's Connecticut? Your faces are telling me a lot, but.
Well, the short answer is I don't know yet, and it's, you know, I learned about a day, two days ago, that we were going to be able to come in front of you and make this request, do attend our event. And I said, well, let's, let's use this as an opportunity to educate a little bit about the electric bus technology, but we need to look into what the, what the state is doing. I actually met with Representative Steinberg informally last night. He's on the Transportation Committee and shared with him some of the details about what we're going to display here in Fairfield. So he's coming from Westport to come see what we're doing, and so he's, he's excited about it. We're also a part of another group called Sustainable Fairfield County. And so it has, I think, 14 or 15 of the Fairfield County communities.
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Okay, we keep growing. That collaborate on sustainability initiatives throughout the county. And this presentation is shared with them and already have been invited to give it in Greenwich and Weston. So we're trying to get the word out and build that, if you will, that consensus for state action as well.
Thank you. I do know that Bridgeport is getting two buses this fall, and I know, are they transit?
Transit buses.
Okay. But they're electric, Proterra, different brand. And then I know Middletown is working, there's a group working hard to do something in there. There's nothing definitive yet, but those are the two places in the state I know of.
Thank you.
Mr. Asa?
Just a quick question. As popularity of plug-in electrics grow, are there any plans to increase the number of charging stations throughout town? I know the UI ones there that are free to the public are great, and I've taken advantage of them myself, but I'm seeing a lot more plug-in cars on the Fairfield roads. I was just curious if you could speak to that.
Yeah, I would say, as of this point, there's not real concrete plans, but Daphne wears a lot of hats, and one of her other hats is she heads the Clean Cities Coalition for Southwest Fairfield County.
Southwestern.
Southwestern.
Southwestern area.
Southwestern area. And they are in the final stages of wrapping up a study for the town. Yeah.
So, I'm actually in the process of doing an EV readiness study for the town of Fairfield. And so we're talking to, you know, organizations, businesses, we've done surveys, and we're looking to see, you know, what we really need to do to have more infrastructure, how to get more charging stations, more workplace charging stations, and see who's interested in participating in that. So we're working closely with UI, because they're really interested in also supporting charging stations as well. So there'll be more coming.
Yeah, and just to kind of tip our hand a little bit on that, key gaps are making charging available to people that don't own their homes, so to people that rent. If you own your own home, it's so easy. You have a charging station put in your garage. It costs whatever, $1,000, $1,500. It's there for, for your house, and anytime you change cars, you use the same, same plug. And at night, before you go to bed, you plug in, and every morning you wake up and you're full. So it's, it's an easy thing. But for renters, not so great. For people that commute to Fairfield and that want to be able to charge at work, that's another area where there's a gap. And lastly, fast charging. But we do have a supercharger going in in Fairfield that's at the rest area, I-95 rest area.
Yeah, I'd just like to add too, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but Connecticut has the worst air quality in the country, second only to California. So it's really important that we make decisions to clean up our air so that we avoid any of these health hazards. It's really important that we're responsible and we make the right decisions for our children and for the community at large.
Mrs. Lieber?
Do you know if White Plains purchased their own buses, or do they get grants and incentives to do that?
I don't know all the details, but I know that the, I believe the buses are owned by the operator, which is National Express Transit.
Okay.
And that the economics were enhanced by an energy storage agreement with Con Edison. So basically, the electric utility went into contract with NET, National Express Transit, to use the buses in the summer months and off-peak for energy storage for the grid. So that was the key incentive that made the economics work out.
So I don't know if it's you guys, are there other people meeting with the busing companies who would most likely purchase these buses and add them to their fleet? Because we outsource with those companies. And I would imagine it would be complicated if we purchased some buses and had to try to manage some town-owned buses with non-town-owned buses. So, sorry, long question to whether or not you're talking to the transit companies.
We haven't done that, but we plan to do that, definitely. And, and again, that was something we would offer, is if the point in time was right, we could actually bring in a technology provider to, to share with you how it, how it might work for the town, looking ahead.
Thank you.
For your information, on November 13th, there actually will be an electric vehicle conference at Fairfield University with information, more information about this, and there will be a special session on, on, on school buses, electric school buses.
That's awesome.
So you'll be invited.
Thank you for this information. Just one more thing. In your packet is something from the Connecticut Green Bank on how to finance things, and they'll be at the event, and they'll be able to talk more to you about the, understand the differences between the way we work, where we don't own the buses, and then schools, the systems that do, and they can address any of them in terms of financing. Yeah.
Do you know if there's any concerns about repairs? I mean, this is new technology. The bus breaks down? Would it be easy to service them?
So there was a, there was a project in Massachusetts that was done a few years ago, and, you know, the technology was new, and there were, there were, there were problems and issues. But they worked through those issues with the manufacturer, and so they were, they were our guinea pigs. So a lot of the problems that initially, you know, with the charging stations and different things that came up with the cold weather, a lot of those issues have been addressed in Massachusetts. And so, you know, we have White Plains, so, you know, they're another guinea pig for us. But a lot of the major issues that initially happened have been taken care of.
Yeah, I'll add, I've been personally driving an electric vehicle for over seven years, and all I've had to do in seven years is change the tires every three years. So batteries are extremely reliable. I've never gone for an oil change. The brakes last forever. I'm going to knock on wood because something could go wrong, but from the Massachusetts pilot study, I'm glad Daphne brought that up. One of the things they said was that not only was there the normal reduced maintenance that you get with an electric vehicle, and the fact that the batteries are now becoming extremely reliable and warranted for 10 years, they said that the diesel emissions were caustic and would create corrosion, especially on the, strangely enough, in staircase. And it was, you know, the emissions associated with that and the undercarriage so that it would have to be replaced periodically. And with the electric buses, they were finding that that corrosion factor was basically eliminated. So it was, it was another surprising reduction in maintenance that they were experiencing.
There's also electric school buses on Long Island.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, and see you Saturday.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to give one plug for something that's happening in this room. Thursday night, it's a, and some of our reporters are here. It's a panel of journalists covering the environment, and I think it'd be a great place for, you know, thing for the kids to come and hear real-life journalists and what they have to do to tackle in covering the environment. So that's Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30 in this conference room.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to all business. Okay, moving on to old business update, environmental testing at school field sites. Mr. Cummings, you want to give us an update?
Absolutely. If I could have two available to answer questions tonight from the board, is if they could come up, Mr. Papa George and Mr. Cleary from the town. So I want to start with the update and start with the good news. We have, as of this afternoon, received the testing results from seven of our test sites, and I'm just going to read those out. So actually, let me take a step back for one second. This is to delineate, as I spoke about at our last meeting, the town had conducted a series of tests on 20 sites. As a result of that, the Fairfield Public Schools elected to first initially test seven additional school fields, and then to also test our playscapes. I have an update tonight on the seven school fields that were tested, because those results came in today. And I want to make clear at the beginning, I'm going to list the schools. They are North Straffield, Straffield, Roger Sherman, Osborne Hill, Roger Ludlow Middle, Fairfield Ward High School, and Fairfield Ludlow High School, including Sturgis. All right, it's important to remember that that includes Sturgis. That the test results on all of those sites have come back and cleared the fields for use by our students and our student athletes. A notice of this will be going out after our meeting tonight, I'll put a message out on Infinite Campus. But that's the important news going forward from tonight. Now, two issues came out of this, though, that I want to stress, and we will follow up with subsequent information on this as well. During the course of this testing, the test results indicated the presence of pesticides in the grass. Now, it's important to remember that at least since 2000, the year 2000, the state of Connecticut has outlawed the use of non-organic pesticides on elementary and middle school fields. K-8 fields essentially, that use of those pesticides has been outlawed. They're able to be used at the high schools if, for older athletes. And in our town, it's important to note that Fairfield Ludlow uses those, but we do not use those at Fairfield Ward because of the presence of the ECC program at Fairfield Ward. But what these pesticides were being identified by the testing company were not even the most recent use of pesticides. These are pesticides that were in use 40, 50 years ago. So if you remember your history of any of us who remember DDT exposure, Rachel Carson in Silent Spring, this is the legacy of those decisions made all those years ago. We have a letter, and I will attach this letter to the Infinite Campus message that goes out tonight, but it is a letter from Meg Harvey from the State Department of Public Health, that in her review of the test results, there is no concern around contact, human contact with these issues. These pesticides are deep within the soil, and they present a potential issue to well. Now, the fortunate news out of all of this is we do not have wells around any of these field sites. So we are not, we don't have an issue around that, but it's, this would be an issue perhaps in other parts of town, if those fields were there, closer to the wells. And again, it's really important to remember that what she is saying is that we do not have any concerns around human contact with this. And again, the legacy of this is, you know, the sins of our fathers, as it were, to some degree, or perhaps even ourselves. But that is one issue we're dealing with. And then right before the board meeting, or earlier this evening, I should say, we also got some notice from Mr. Cleary that additional fill pile issues were identified at two more school locations. Now, I want to be clear about this as well, and I'm providing a lot of information, and I think more information will either come tonight from Mr. Cleary, or will come from communication from the town. But one of those sites was underneath the parking areas at Tomlinson, which raises, I think, questions about whether we have to remediate that or not, which I'm not qualified to answer, but that's the question. And then at Osborne Hill, along the third base side of the baseball field. So we're going to go forward opening the Osborne Hills field, and then isolate that spot of testing like we've done at Riverfield and at Jennings. So that spot at Osborne Hill will go on the list with the Riverfield and the Jennings sites for further exploration by the town, and what they're going to do with that. But we'll be able to open the rest of the field at Osborne Hill, and again, at all those others, at those six other locations, because we've been given clearance essentially by the testing company and from Meg Harvey at the Department of Public Health. I think I've covered most of that information, I probably have forgotten something, but if there's questions, or again, if there's questions from Mr. Cleary or Mr. Papa George around this work, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, just quickly on the Tomlinson, where on the property is that? I don't know that I remember anytime recently there being a lot of fill used for parking lot renovations there.
This dates back, I apologize, this dates back, I'm just going to, well, Mr. Cleary, do you want to answer that? You might, you had to.
So I don't have a lot of information, but basically, these are, I think, and again, I summarized it in the email, I didn't bring that email with me, but this is, I believe, in the 1415 or 1315 school years, that there was some drainage work done in the parking lot areas. And, you know, as is the typical use for this material, around a pipe, you use fill, you don't use topsoil, you use this aggregate fill. And they filled it in, and then they covered it up with asphalt. So these areas are under asphalt now. Asphalt is one of the remediation options available to the town for addressing some of these issues. And so we will turn it over to the Ty and Bond and work with them in terms of their, what's their guidance on this, you know, and work with the state, you know. And in some cases, the state is saying, well, if it's under pavement, then that's sort of already remediated, nobody's going to come in contact with that.
But that's effectively what we're doing down with the berm at the former fill site anyway, capping.
Yeah, the berm, berm has all residential level stuff on the exterior surface, yes.
Ms. Teresa?
Thank you for this update. Just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Cleary, do you know where we are with the testing on the playscapes?
I'll turn that to Angela.
Or Mr. Papa George?
They're telling us by the end of this week, we're hoping earlier.
Okay. So can you just explain really quick what happens, the process, so when those test results go back, who do they go to? I mean, they don't, you're not the one making the decision?
No, the tests have all been completed, they went out to an independent lab, the lab results are starting to filter back to Ty Bond. They will put together a package like the one you see before you, and then they will send it out to us. There are, the results are starting to filter into Ty Bond already, that's why we're hoping earlier than the end of the week, but...
Okay, so Ty and Bond went out, took the samples, they send those samples to the independent lab, just like all these other tests, they get them back, and then they come back to the town. And then is it Mr. Cleary that reviews those before?
We share them with Mr. Cleary, and we discuss it.
Okay. At the last meeting, I had asked a question about the sourcing of playground, I believe it was wood chips or material, and, you know, is there any kind of testing or certifying source? We were told that it comes from a certified location. Did, I believe you guys were going to look into that, did we get any answers on that?
I believe we put the certification up on the website that we did receive from the company.
Okay, and that is, so there's actual, there's not a testing done on it, but?
Honestly, I don't know what their testing procedures are, but it's a certified, I want to say it was an independent lab, but I'd have to double-check that, that certified that the playscape material is clean and ready to be used on actual playstations.
And just to reconfirm, our town employees are not laying that mulch that is done by an outside contractor?
We have it delivered to the schools, and our grounds company, part of their contract is to spread it.
Okay, okay. With regards, so just, I haven't had a chance to fully go through this, but it looks like everything on here, on these seven fields, has come back below the residential levels, correct? Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson, followed by Mrs. Gerber.
Hi, I just wanted to declare, go back and clarify a little bit on the Fairfield Ludlow High School and the pesticide, just to make sure I really understood what you were saying. Did you say that we are still using those pesticides on FLHS, and that's the only school in the district that we are using them?
Do you want to answer that?
What we're saying is that we do use regulated pesticides on those sites, not the ones that we found on the test results. Those are your old deets, I'm showing my age, I'm not even, I was, DDT. I was told there used to be commercials of kids running through the fields as they were being sprayed with this stuff way back in the early 70s.
So we're using non-organic pesticides at Ludlow High School?
On certain areas, we do. We try to control and use it as limited as possible. It just allows us, it gives us a tool we can use, we don't use them on a regular basis. We try to stick with the standard for the whole district. Those particular fields being Sturgis and the front field at Ludlow High School, they give us an extra tool in our arsenal. We're not going out and spraying them just because we can, we're sticking with our organic pesticides as long as we can. But if we do have issues, Sturgis is a rough field for us, so it does give us the opportunity to use something a little stronger there, because it's an isolated field, and it's not exposing anyone.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just had a question. So in looking at the Osborne Hill map, which is, here we go, oh, there's no page number, but I see, no, that the third base is marked off, but, so that was tested as part of the school field testing. So I guess my question is, how did the Tomlinson come to attention? Because that wasn't a testing site.
Right, and I can, I think Mr. Cleary can elaborate on this, but both the third base side of the Tomlinson baseball, I mean, excuse me, the Osborne Hill baseball field and Tomlinson came up in further examination by the town of the use of the fill pile. It did not, it was not a site directly tested in this, and we're going to, Ty and Bond will have to go back and particularly hit that spot to test it further. That's why we're going to rope it off.
Okay.
It did not come out as a result of these tests.
Okay, even though, because it's in the picture?
Yeah.
So that was just something additional?
Didn't find that spot, right.
Okay. And so, and with Tomlinson, again, this was just what, like Public Works records that indicated?
Yeah, so we're going through, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens of invoices and working with Public Works employees, trying to get down to what was done, where this particular invoice, do you recall where it was used? And going through the, talking to different staff members to try and figure out what was the project. Just today, we, you know, two invoices, they, looking through their records, indicated, yep, these were used in relation to these two projects, two different sites. So it was four invoices that we were investigating, and two different sites. Tomlinson both indicated, you know, drainage work under, that's currently under asphalt. And then Osborne Hill, one site under asphalt right now, and then one is a, what they described as a, you know, essentially a drainage area off to the, off to the side of the third base line on the Osborne Hill ball field there. And so it's most likely they dug a trench, they put some gravel in it, they put some filter fabric and some topsoil to create a drainage system to, you know, improve the conditions of the field. We were not aware of that, we were just made aware of it today, and so we'll, you know, essentially, there will be cordoning off that area until we will handle, hand that over to our LEP, who will investigate the matter, and if testing is indicated, we'll do testing there and move forward.
And then, and then, so there is a second part at Osborne Hill that's under asphalt like it is at Tomlinson? Is that on the blacktop, or is that in the parking lot?
Parking lot, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I have, just because we're, we get asked this a lot, do we have any sense of when we are going to start to get remediation plans for the sites that have been identified?
So we are, you know, again, it's a process of working through, making sure that we're getting all the approvals necessary. We are hoping to move forward with remediation at Gould Manor Park as early as within a week or so. It's, you know, we are going out to bid, we're getting the appropriate contractors, we're following the guidance of DPH on this one. And then we are using that as a template, and then we're moving forward with the other sites. So what is one of the factors that's involved is that there's additional sampling, you know, today we just received some additional results. So we don't want to move forward necessarily with remediation until we have all the results so that we're not going back to a site twice.
Oh, no, I totally understand that, but I guess just in terms of the communication aspect, I just think, you know, once there is some sense of what the plan is, once there is that additional testing done, that will be put on the town website and just, just because I think that that is something in the areas that have been identified, that people are just saying, well, when is this going to happen? And I understand that that's out of your hands, but I just think any sense that we can get to figure it out, you know, because everything is taking a lot longer than we originally thought, and I get why that is the case. But I just think, again, it's something that people are concerned about, now that they know that these sites exist, when will they be taken care of?
And we're trying to move things along as well, and we're, you know, patiently waiting for results, you know, when we get these, this full set of results in, and now we'll have maybe potentially some additional results with Osborne that we may wait for. But, you know, we are, we're working as far as fast as we can in terms of, you know, getting the actual plans in place and all the financial aspects of it, getting contractors to bid, you know, abatement contractors to bid on the work, and to, you know, have them approved and be, you know, with purchasing and all that, all that type of stuff. So that's the process. Ty and Bond is, you know, essentially waiting on the last set of results for them to fully design the, you know, the areas. So what will happen is, you know, depending on what these results find, so what we're, what we, if we use Gould Manor Park, for example, we had some testing results, and then we went back and did this delineation. How far, how deep does this stuff go, how wide, how long does it go? And so we will, we have started some of that work, that's already, that testing is underway, the delineation of some of these areas, but there may be additional delineation that needs to happen if some of the playscape structures need to be addressed with remediation. There may be additional sampling that has to take place to delineate that, you know, that area to say, how much do we, what do we have to remediate exactly?
Thank you.
He has a follow-up. Ms. Teresa, then Ms. Becker.
I just have a follow-up, actually, to the last two questions, but I'll start with Osborne Hill. So just to clarify, looking at this map and looking at these results, the field is tested and is clear. So what is being said is through this discovery, this is considerably off the field that's going to be cordoned off, correct?
So again, you know, we became aware of this at, I'm going to say around 4:15 or so, I was in a meeting where we were discussing different sites. The, yeah, so my, I haven't been out there, I haven't walked it, what I was, how it was described to me is it's a drainage project on, off the third base line.
Okay, so to Mr. Papa George, can you address, I believe it's been stated in the past, that the baseball diamonds themselves are maintained and treated by an outside contractor, not the town, correct? Where the town is addressing the fields, but we hire somebody private to do the diamond area, correct?
Correct. It's actually the same company that does the fields. Diamond Landscaping does our mowings around our buildings.
Okay.
And they also are contracted with the town to do the baseball fields, because they're...
Okay. So the fact that we're not finding any elevated levels in the actual, it looks like sample one here in the Osborne Hill map would make sense. So to be clear, the field is going to be open, but the area in question of the fill will be cordoned off?
Correct. We'll have crews out tomorrow morning marking it off.
Okay, and going back to the Ludlow, I think just in case anybody didn't hear it clearly, what you're saying is the use of non-organic pesticides is, they're still using state-regulated guideline pesticides. So I want to make sure that the public is clear, and if you can confirm this, that we're not using old-school pesticides at all at Ludlow. What we're doing is, when we are non, when we're using non-organic pesticides, we are still using state-mandated chemicals.
Yes, everything we use is state-mandated and regulated, and we are going to, we're going to produce a list and put it up on our website, so that anytime you want, you can go up and look at what we're using and the dates they were used.
And then finally, following up on this, if you could just clarify, because some people in the public, like myself, are going to wonder, we're talking about pesticides on these fields, but this never came up on the original testing of the 20 sites. Can you just speak to that as to, as to why there's that inconsistency, so we can kind of make sure the public knows, okay, this is why this happened?
So when the town had the testing done on their sites, they knew specific items they were looking for from the fill pile out on the site. When the board asked us to have the school sites tested, we did a full ray of testing, and it was, so when the town did it, they weren't looking at pesticides, so they didn't include that in their test results, they only included what they were specifically looking for. Because we didn't have specific areas that we were identified as fill- Because we didn't have specific areas that we were identified as fill pile areas, we did a full gantry of tests to cover every aspect on the fields, and that's why they came up on our test results, but not on.
So if I could turn that to Mr. Cleary, based on what you see in these seven fields and these results from the pesticide levels and, and the attestation from the state saying that it's safe, would you agree that likely we would find similar results potentially on the other fields that the town tested? And will most likely be a same situation, even though those weren't tested? So I, I personally don't feel the need to go do this testing that we did here on the fields that were tested already, based on these seven results. Would, would you share any light on that?
Well, I, I think it's reasonable to conclude that it would likely be similar, you know? And that's the best I can give you in the, in the absence of results, is that, you know, this is what we found. It's, it's a rather extensive set of sampling, lots of samples. And so it's likely that we'd find similar results at the other schools.
Thank you.
Ms. Picka?
Hi, I'm trying to go through and read all of these, and I apologize. I'm looking at Sherman School. If you could help through Mr. Cummings to Mr. Sands, if you can help me. These numbers are just slightly higher than the other schools, and I'm trying to understand, under exceedance, what GBPMC stands for?
So that's a pollut, you know, it's pollutant mobility criteria. So, so when they do these tests, there's certain criteria that apply to them. So one is, is direct exposure criteria. That talks about risk to human health. And then the pollutant mobility criteria talks about risk to the environment. So the levels that they're talking there are, do they exceed the pollutant mobility criteria? And so do they present a risk to groundwater potentially? These results don't say that they present a risk to groundwater. There's another test that will be done, a leachability test that will be done.
To Sherman School?
To, to, to the schools, yes. That, that will be done to determine, does this present any kind of leachability? Is it, can it actually go into the groundwater? And based upon, what we've been advised, based upon these results, they're, they're low enough that in their experience, they don't think these will present any kind of issue moving forward, you know, requiring any additional work.
Do you know what the range is? I mean, like, the highest one is 1.5 here. I'm just wondering what the range is for these numbers.
You know, it's, so it, it varies per constituent, you know, on that. So I'm, and believe me, I'm not an expert, and I'm learning this, some of this as we go through it as well. But the, you know, what we've been advised is that these are, you know, magnitudes below the direct exposure criteria. So there's absolutely no risk for the human exposure, and that it's, it's enough that we have to look further into it in terms of will Department of Energy and Environmental Protection require any action of the town? Now that these are samples taken in, some of these are samples taken in areas where they classify the groundwater a certain way, where wells are possible, so that's how they, why they look at this. In our town, they're, they don't exist, these wells don't exist in these areas. It's all, you know, you know, aquarium water provided. So, so it, it doesn't present a risk, you know, in that regard of contaminating well water. But it's, it's part of the process we have to go through of, once we find these findings, then we go back and do a second set of leachability tests.
Okay, so I have one more question. It's actually through Mr. Cummings, through Mr. Papa George. Do you know when this soil was put here? Because I know there's been a lot of work done at this school.
I actually don't have that with me. I do know the soccer field was completely redone a few years back. So I could look up and get those. It was 2017, 2017 it was completely rebuilt. I do know that one of the things with the leaching tests that they're gonna do, the Ty Bond told me, he said that he, again, he doesn't feel it's gonna be any concern. And reason being, he said they would be gone after all the hurricanes and the flooding we've had there if it was still leachable. So he said that's why he's confident they're not gonna have any results come back that require any further work down there.
Ms. Jacobson, do you still have a question? I think you were next after Ms. Picka.
Sure. Just quickly, when you, the asphalt areas that you're going to have to, I'm just curious, how do you test below the asphalt?
So you can, if, if you were required to test below asphalt, you use a machine, a boring machine that would go through that. So you're essentially drilling a hole through that. You know, the, the guidance that we've gotten so far, we haven't confirmed it on all sites, but is that, you know, if there's, if this fill was used below as a subbase for a parking lot, or is currently under asphalt, that there's no recommendation, at least at this point, to go ahead and, and drill through that and then perform some type of abatement on those areas.
Yeah, that's what I would think. And just the, you're talking about the bidding process, so just so we're clear. You're wanting to get as much as possible, if not all of the results back, so that your bid is accurate for any remediation that's needed, correct? And that's, may take a little bit longer, more time?
Yeah, so to fully define the scope of a remediation, you need to have all the data available. And so being that, you know, we started with one set of samples, and then a decision was made to collect additional ones, and then another decision was made, that's somewhat putting off the final development of the remediation plan. And so that's, that's one of the reasons for the delay, but we're, we are working with Ty and Bond daily to sort of push that and to get things moving and to get the approvals that we need. And, you know, being that we're not under orders from DEP, you know, you know, these things don't, don't rise to the thresholds where they typically get involved. It's kind of like requesting them to review our plans that they don't really have to sign off on and, and saying, yeah, we're okay with you guys going that way, you know, but it's sort of additional work to them, you know, that, that, you know, we're not, you know, they're prime players in this, in this particular incident, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
So just to make, so through the chair to Mr. Cummings. And what I'm hearing here is that so that these fields are all fine, but that the public and we can expect that there's gonna be another round of testing regarding this whole issue of the groundwater? So when we get a second report, it's, well, yes, you got phase one, but phase two still has yet to come. So we expect to hear these names all come up one more time, correct?
Yeah, I would say that that's absolutely accurate. We, we, but again, those test results won't have an impact on our ability to use the fields. We've gotten clearance that our kids can use those fields.
Okay, and on that note, does that mean these fields will be open tomorrow?
Those fields will be open as quickly as possible. I'm going to alert the principals. I already sent an email to the principals asking them to stay on email tonight as much as possible. They can read it in the morning if they don't, can't stay up late, but I will make that notification. I'll also reach out specifically to Mr. Hudson at Osborne that, for now, avoid the baseball field until we can delineate that area and make sure that the right area is cordoned off. Meanwhile, the area at Riverfield and Jennings that had previously been identified remain off limits. And we're still waiting, as to Mr. Asa's question before, we're still waiting on the playscapes.
And that word also gets not to the principals, and obviously the principals to the athletic directors, so that those teams traveling to Trumbull and to parts around Fairfield County in order to have their practices can come home.
I believe Mr. Gavan has probably already texted Mr. Fry.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Also, hold on. When you talk about remediating the playscapes, is, am I understanding that we're not concerned about the ground that is underneath the wood chips? It's the wood chips only? No, it's, it is both?
I, I would say to the question of the wood chips, based on what we know about the wood chips, that's the lesser of our concerns. I think our concern is the soil underneath the wood chips.
Okay, and two more questions. First of all, we talk about this timeline, and obviously I agree with Mrs. Gerber. We're hearing plenty about when is this happening, when is this happening? The fact that Parks and Rec just voted to now expand exponentially the number of fields that now need additional testing, will that hold up these remediation forwarding?
Can I just clarify one thing? The vote that the Parks and Rec Commission took was to request that the Board of Selectmen look at doing that. And the Board of Selectmen isn't meeting until a week from tomorrow, is my understanding. So just wanted to put that in there, that the request is to the Board of Selectmen to consider testing the additional sites.
With a recommendation to do so?
Well, it's the Commission requested that they do this.
So it's a direct request to please test every single field in town?
Yes.
And my question is, if the Board of Selectmen then choose to act on that, does that hold up all of the remediation work? Because now we need to wait for those test results to come back?
No, that won't hold up. So we'll have, you know, we'll have Gould Manor start first, and then we'll look at the school sites that we are currently identified, once we get the playscape samples back. But no, it'll, it'll be, we'll have projects in the pipeline, and we'll continue to work through. That will be another set that we'll have to go through the same, similar process of testing, then delineation testing if needed, and then remediation plans.
Okay, then I'm misunderstanding, back to Mrs. Jacobson's question. My understanding was you needed the full data set before the whole idea went out to bid in order to get this remediated?
The full data set for each location.
So this isn't a package deal? These are each going out as mini projects?
So there may be, you know, we have to put, there may be separate remediation contractors to move things faster. There may be separate remediation contractors at different sites. And so Ty and Bond will oversee the remediation contractors, but they may bring in individual contractors at different sites to move this along quicker.
So do we have a, enough of a critical mass right now that the first bids should be being requested?
My understanding is that they're, they're doing that with Gould Manor right now.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and that, that'll be the first site that we address. And then the, the other ones are closely in the pipeline, and once we get, you know, so we don't have the samples at, for example, Jennings and Riverfield for the playscapes yet. So once we get that, we have all the other testing, but once we get that, then we'll be able to say this, you know, you know, if we only have to do the areas that we currently know about, then that will move very, very quickly.
Okay, so then I guess my point is that I had misunderstood your answer to Mrs. Jacobson. I thought we were waiting for all test results to have one large project go out to bid, and that is not the case?
All, all test results for each site. So before we can propose a remediation plan for a specific site, we need to have all the test results for that site.
I got you. Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, is you explicitly mentioned that this, this, we are kind of setting our own timeline because the state of Connecticut is not concerned, or is not involving itself in the issue. I'm not quoting you, obviously.
Yeah, no, we, we are involving them.
Right, we're involving them, but my point is that if you could please repeat, and this is more for the sake of the public, why that's the case, that they're not actively involved in what they're seeing in our test results?
So DEP typically gets involved in, in, in cases where they order people to take action. You know, they're, they're issuing orders for people to clean up areas. In, in this case, they haven't issued any orders, so we're not, we're not under directives of them. We're not being told we have to do it by a certain time period or in a certain way. We are, they have essentially said to us, you know, given the data that we have, you hire an LEP, and you have your LEP work with us and work with the Connecticut Department of Public Health and to design the remediation plans and then implement them. And so that's there, but we are reaching out to them, you know, you know, several times a week to get their input and say, are you, are you good with the approach we're taking? And the information we're getting back is, yes, we're, we're good with where you're going. We're happy that you're sharing us the data, and, you know, please keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Thanks for coming back around to me. I've had a chance to process this a little further. A couple of minor things very quickly. First, just a random observation on the North Strat Field test results. It's listed as North Stratford, although the map is, is correct, and I'm sure that this right side just says a random thing jumped out at me. A question in terms of the testing, can you tell me a little bit about how deep the bores go? Are we talking about, are they boring down a foot to see what's a foot down, or are they taking a core that's, and using all of that material?
Everywhere.
Everywhere? What, yeah, what's the general process about how, how deep you're going for the material?
You know, I, I, to be definitive, I'd have to ask Jim from Ty and Bond, but Angela's just saying.
Jim told me the typical test site would be six to eight inches below grade.
All right, so you're not, you're not just taking the first half inch, or you're going, you're going down? That's all I wanted to know for that. But one result here that I need a little clarification on is at the Fairfield Ward site, near the south end of the fields, near NAPS Highway, there's a listing for asbestos in material by PLM at site number five, where it says a concentration of 3%. And in the results table, it says the EPA standard is 1%. I don't know quite what that means. It makes it sound like there's actual material, like, harkens back to Gould Manor.
Yeah, so, so similar to Gould Manor, when they're doing the soil tests, and then they see something that is, is in any way a potentially asbestos-containing material, they will take that material by itself and sample that independently. At that particular sample location, they did that. And one material, one small piece of what they described as tile, non-friable asbestos, similar to Gould Manor. So it doesn't present a human health hazard. It needs to be addressed, and it will be. But it's, it doesn't present any kind of health risk. It's not something that's gonna give off fiber. All the soil samples there didn't show any asbestos in the soil in that particular sample site, or any of the sample sites. So it's, it's simply a, a small piece of material was in there, and it did come back.
So there's no sign that the soil is contaminated? They found
That's correct.
a stray piece of something, and, and not in the other bore holes that are all around it? This, only in this one
Just in that one location.
One fragment?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Asa?
I just want to take a minute to thank Mr. Cummings and Mr. Papa George. As we know, when this all started, the town identified sites, and the school administration, a brand-new superintendent, made the very tough call to really disrupt the entire opening of the school year in, in an abundance of caution. But I want to applaud Mr. Cummings and the building administrators for working through this while we did this, because I feel that this was a very worthwhile endeavor that we went on. I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing, and quite honestly relieved. There are some issues, as has been mentioned, at a few of the schools that are small areas that are cordoned off. But as we're hearing tonight, all of our school fields are going to be opened. And I just want to say to the public, I for one appreciate your patience as kids are not able to play on playscapes. But I think this is a very worthwhile exercise that we're doing to just be 100% sure that we don't have any issues and we're not putting our kids in harm's way. So thank you to Mr. Cummings, thank you to this board, thank you to Mr. Papa George and everybody involved.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just following up on that comment, I just want to say that I've heard from both high schools just how great our student athletes have been, and our coaches, and being flexible, and no complaining that I've heard from at either location, and just amazing reports on our kids and our coaches and families being so flexible for this start of the season. So best wishes to both schools as they get back home.
Any else? Thank you, Mr. Cleary, for coming back.
Thank you very much.
Approval of student survey for Sacred Heart Project. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve the student survey proposed by Dr., I don't want to
Price.
Price. Can I have a motion? Mr. Dwyer, seconded by Mrs. Max and Canelli. Mr. Cummings, do you have any additional information on this?
Just that, one of the questions that was raised when we were together last was the question of around the surveying of free and reduced and gathering that information. Mr. DC and I spoke about it, and, and we talked to Mr. Price about it, and we're not gonna release that information. We think that, given the sample size, that that information would be a violation of privacy. So other than that, we're, we're fine with the survey going forward.
Any other questions or comments from the board? This is a voting item. Any members of the public like to speak to this voting item? Okay, seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Pitcairn, Sleepy, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes nine zero. Thank you. Approval of proposed text for international business course, Ms. Goddessman. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the international business textbook as proposed in the memo of July 18th, 2019. Can I have a motion? Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Pitcairn. Mr. Cummings, any additional information on this?
No, one, just one piece of correction. I think in one of my verbal responses at the last meeting, I said there were 60 textbooks, but in the information I sent you as a follow-up, 35 were ordered at each high school. So there was a total of 70 textbooks. The dollar amount, though, is accurate for what was ordered.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments from the board? Seeing none to the public. Any member of the public like to speak to this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Pitcairn, Mrs. Sleepy? Unanimous? I, I need to practice, come on. Motion passes nine zero. I didn't raise my hand, so you don't even know it was unanimous. Moving on, new business, first read of Moving on, new business, first read of policy 5144.4, students' discipline, physical exercise, and discipline of students, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Yeah, so again, the, so the format, you have two drafts of it, the one that has the red on it, that indicates the new language, you can also see the strike-through for what's being taken out, and then just so you can have the clean reading experience, there is the other draft, which just reads the policy in total, I, this was a little bit statute-generated, the one part that involves some conversation is the end of that first paragraph, because in fact, we do have additional time in our elementary schools, again, I'm just going to keep calling it wiggle time, because I don't know what they're calling it now, and so, but the rest of this, I think, is fairly self-explanatory, if anybody has any questions now, I'd be happy to address them, otherwise, I would please ask that I get questions in advance of the next meeting.
Does anybody have any questions now for the policy committee? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Approval of minutes, recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve the August 27, 2019 special meeting minutes, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa, all in favor? Mr. Peterson, no, Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Cannelly, all opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Peterson. So curious as to why.
Let's add to the meeting time to talk about why he did that.
Point of personal privilege?
Granted.
I did it because they were giving you grief about not saying unanimous.
God sakes.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
About the minutes.
Yeah. Superintendent's report, opening of school update, Mr. Cummings, now that we've had our field update, we can just hear about the fun stuff, hopefully.
Is there anything else? So, yes, real quick, I want to just echo the comments that have already been stated by members of the board, the opening of the school was a strong success across the district, we were guided by beautiful weather, we really had wonderful weather over the last couple of weeks, the transportation, we had a new transportation director in place, there was, there's always some issues with that on the first couple of days of school, but overall, comments from the, that we heard from the principals was, that it was a very successful opening around the transportation, the busing, I was visiting the schools those first couple of days, and there were only a couple of reports of school buses running late, and that is since, from everything I understand, was ironed out relatively quickly, we had, it's always amazing to me, and people get tired of me saying it, but when you go to the schools on the first couple of days, and I was at Fairfield Ludlow, probably five, 10 minutes after school had begun in the lobby, and the level of student and staff back into it is just amazing to me, it's just, sometimes I wonder if it's a good thing, I'll be honest with you, but it just amazes me how wonderful everybody is, and the clear happiness that people greet each other at the end of the, at the end of the summer, people are truly excited to be back and to see each other, and the kids high-five and their staff members in the hall there, and throughout the schools as I traveled through, Ms. Goddessman and I split the district in half over those first couple of days, and we both saw it, and commented on it with the principals, and the principals commented on it well with us, it was just really inspiring, it speaks to, I think, so much to the strengths of the school system, and finally, the level of patience that everybody has afforded the delay in the fields, the routines, and I know that patience might be fraying a bit, but, and I understand it, I certainly understand it, but again, the level of ingenuity, the way our principals greeted it, the way our kids and staff and our parents have responded to it, again, speaks volumes about where people are, I'm glad right now that we're not going another single day on the fields, but it really speaks well to how people absorb issues in this district, and the patience and the level of work around it, and I think it also speaks, quite honestly, to the importance of communication, clear lines of communication throughout the district, I can't thank enough Mr. Papa George, who has been bombarded by myself personally with emails, phone calls, visits to his office, where I just appear in the doorway, and he looks up, and, but he's been, and Mr. Clear, as well, on the town side, has been tremendous, so again, I think it's a joint effort, it took longer than we all would have wanted, but the end result right now is good, and we'll keep hoping for good results, so thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Cummings about the first-day school? Okay, seeing none. Summer 2019 work update, Mr. Papa George.
I, just one quick second, I did ask, Mr. Papa George came up, but I also asked him to speak tonight to, I know the board has been getting some questions about Fairfield Ludlow, so I asked him to speak to some degree specifically around, issues around Fairfield Ludlow.
So enclosure three in your packets will show the 17 projects that we completed this summer, those are non-recurring and budgeted projects, so that's the 17 major projects we finished, in addition to that, you guys don't have this because it's a lot of pages that you really don't need, the front page is the most important one, which is a study of our work program, our work order program, which, from July 1, fiscal year 1, to present, we've completed 1,293 work orders, we have, I'm sorry, we've closed 1,293 work orders, we've completed 307, and we still have 1,419 in progress, so the maintenance guys were quite busy this year, as well as the projects going on around them, this, again, you guys are welcome to have a copy of that if you want, but I decided to save some trees, and maybe just present it to you instead. As for Ludlow High School, with the, I'm not sure, which part were you looking for? An update on?
If you could give an update on the, on the fields, particularly the field work that's going on, I know there's been some questions around, scoreboard, electrical issues, things like that.
So the, we started the summer with a electrical problem in the concession stand, which we were able to, over the summer, working with our in-house electricians, we were able to identify the breaker problems, and what was causing the tripping, we replaced the wire feed from the junction box out on the field to the concession stand, and today, we have not had a trip since that has occurred, we haven't run full load in there, because the concession stand hasn't been open yet, but we're not anticipating any problems, we also took this time, since we were pulling new cabling into the concession stand, to upgrade the cable from the junction box to the concession stand to a 200-amp service instead of the 100 that was currently feeding it, there's still work to be completed, the panel needs to be updated, so it's still being fed at a 100-amp service, but we can change the breaker at any point, and bring the feeds into the concession stand up to a 200-amp service, and we did that anticipation of possibly moving forwards with the second-floor locker room that was requested, and we have, currently, we are putting into the operating budget for next summer, to do those upgrades to the second floor and the concession stand. In addition, the scoreboard company out of Massachusetts has been out, and has replaced the parts on the scoreboard on the field, and it is currently up and running, we haven't had any issues with it as of yet, they haven't had a game yet, but they have been testing it, the only glitch that we're still waiting to see is when we have a full stadium, if we have any issues, but supposedly, that was one of the issues that was causing big problems, and that was one of the issues that was eliminated with the new boards put inside, the two in the gym that were supposed to be replaced, they came out with two boards for each one, and one of them came damaged, so they were only able to install one, and when they installed one, they couldn't get it up and running, so they replay, they returned both boards, we're waiting for them to come back out and replace those boards, the athletic director felt that, once the field one was up and running, the inside one, we could get up at a later time, even though we're still continuing to push the company to get out and get them updated.
The lights?
The lights, so we have a temporary light tower on loan from the state FEMA department for emergency services, which is parked right by the tower that has multiple lights out, the birds are still occupying the nest on the tower, so we are still unable to do any work up there, we did reach out to the national level, and they told us that, coming up really soon, we should be able to move the nest, they said even if the birds are still occupying it, once they're able to be in flight, we can actually move it, we do have some other issues that we're trying to work with to get that accomplished, we're also working with the state and the local to figure out a way to possibly get them to move the location of their nest, we were told that if we move the actual nest to a new location, they may choose to do that, in addition to putting possibly owls or something that motion up on top of the towers to keep, distract them, or keep them away from the tower, we're, we're working every way we can, but as soon as we, we have the PO open to the electricians, and as soon as we can get them out and up there, they will have those lights fixed, we're hoping within the next couple of weeks.
These are ospreys?
Yes.
I did, September, they're supposed to fly to South America, so we have a couple of weeks, I think, that maybe they'll just.
That's what we're hoping.
As they're gone, we've got to get those lights.
Mrs. Gerber?
Can we ask questions, do we want to address any of the Ludlow things, are we still on that, or does anyone want to address the Ludlow issues, and, because I had a couple of questions about the.
Yeah, any questions, let's finish up with Ludlow, does anybody have any questions about Ludlow?
I have just one question about.
Yep.
The FEMA light that was provided, does that actually provide enough light for a night game?
I don't know that we've actually had a game yet, I know they've been using them for practice, we, we had a little issue the other day, it kind of disappeared on us, so we had to relocate it, but we did, and it's back, and it's not going to move now, it's, it goes up probably halfway up the light tower, when you raise it fully up, you've seen them around, they're on the town when they do the lights on the flags in the center of town, it's just, it's operated by the police department, it's a tow behind trailer with a generator onboard, so.
Good.
Ms. Jacobson.
Just on the field scoreboard, so the ones in the gym you said are getting actually replaced with new, two new scoreboards?
No, there's, it's just the board inside the.
Like the motherboard, so to speak?
Basically.
Oh, okay.
The computer control.
That's what it's called, right? Motherboard?
Yes.
That's what it is, right?
Printed circuit board.
Okay, thank you. So, I know you were talking about upcoming for next year, are these replacements going to last a while, or do we need to still be looking at replacing these scoreboards?
The, the new chips inside, or boards and motherboards inside the scoreboards, should be an upgraded version to what we are there, and should last us for some time, I know we're still looking at the outside scoreboard as a possible upgrade, because it is not a multi-game scoreboard, so we want to up, we're looking at upgrading that, so it can handle all the athletic field events that happen on the turf field.
Okay, that was just it on Ludlow, but I have, on the other. To replace the outdoor scoreboard, would that also require just electrical upgrades to the field?
It would not.
Okay. Any other questions about Ludlow? Okay, moving back on to, if anybody has any questions about the other summer work that's done, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I was just wondering through the chair to Mr. Papa George, if you could just provide some context about the, well, I know why the Walter Fitzgerald is TBD, but the other two, so the gymnasium bleachers at, Power Assist at Tomlinson, and the shot put, and discus at Roger Ludlow, just what exactly their status is?
So, going down the list, the gym bleacher assist at Tomlinson is a piece of equipment we're looking, we were looking to purchase, it was put into the bid, we put it on hold because of the Osborne issues that were going on with the funding, so we were looking for places to find funding for that, it's on hold, it's still something we can order at any point, once we move forwards, and actually, moving down the list, the.
Shot put and discus?
Shot put and discus are the same thing, we put them on hold through the summer for funding for Osborne, to try to work around some numbers to get better pricing on that, we, I know it is a concern of the athletic director, but I've been guaranteed by the contractor that even if there's still snow on the ground, they can perform the work, they do, basically what he told me is, we do foundations all winter long, so there's no concern of not being able to get it done for the spring, as soon as we give them the green light on it.
Okay, yeah, that was going to be my follow-up question on that, and then I guess, just with the in-progress, so with the tennis courts at Ludlow, when it says estimated completion September, so that, is that an issue for this month, not having them?
It is not, the tennis season isn't right now.
Right.
We actually talked with the AD from Ludlow about that, they knew that they weren't going to be ready till the end of September, even going into possibly October, as you, if you've seen them, they're kind of just sitting there at this point, because they need a 30-day cure time before they can continue working on them, we're actually approaching that rapidly, so they, we should actually start to see movement on them soon, and once they come back, it should be a pretty rapid cleanup on them.
Okay, and then with the Dwight, the HVAC, BMS Control Project, again, that's going to be set, that should be done by the end of September, and is that, is that the kind of thing, are they working during the school day, or is it?
Actually, the project up there, the actual physical project is completed, they're now going through the dialing features, and making sure everything's compatible, everything's talking right, and they're actually doing the work from their satellite location, they're not even at the building.
So there's no disruption then?
There's no disruption of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Just really, one thing, through the summer, I noticed, I happen to be at Fairfield Woods a lot, what was the deal with it being poured, and torn up, and poured, and torn up, and was there any actual additional expense to us?
There was no additional expense to us, it was poured, I got a phone call saying I should really come up and look at it, it wasn't too satisfactory, and when I arrived up there the following day, there was a machine ripping it up, so I met with the owner of A Preferred, our contractor, and he said he didn't like the way it looked, and he was ripping it up, so he ripped it up, they re-poured it, and I got another phone call saying that it didn't look the way it should look, so we went up there again, and when we arrived on-site, A Preferred owner was there again, and he said, I don't like it, I'm ripping it up, and he actually went out and hired a subcontractor to do the pour and the cleanup work on it, so it didn't, at no addition to us, it was poured twice, and then by a sub, and then also, the railings were delayed, but they were put in as well by a sub of the company, once we were able to, once we were able to contact the owner of A Preferred, who, what we were told, left the country, is the answer that we kept getting, so, it was a long rocky road, but it was performed by outside contractors at no extra cost to us, and it was completed.
And just, the railings, were they in place for school opening?
They were, they finished around 6:00 PM the night before school started, they were out there core drilling.
Thank you.
How do they look?
They look amazing, Dr., yeah, Dr. Rosado said that they look a lot better than they ever looked up there, and he's very happy with them.
Okay, Ms. Jacobson, you have a question?
Yeah, I do, a couple of follow-ups, the Fairfield Woods project, the entrance area, I didn't see that on our maintenance list, or in our budget book for this summer, for work, was that something that came up during the summer?
It was actually funded out of last year's expenses, so it was, it was started with Mr. Cullen, we, they started doing a small section of it, and then they moved right into it.
Okay.
When school got out, it would have, it should have been done before summer school even started, if they didn't have to rip it up multiple.
Okay, I was just, because it was in the 1920s, so that's why I was confused, okay, so just to follow up on the Osborne Hill project, and why some of these things are on hold, we were given, to the superintendent, or whoever wants to answer this question, how that was being covered, and it wasn't from these projects, so I'm just confused, remember, we had given, you had told us it was coming from the AC consultant, it was coming, so I'm just curious why these would be on hold, if we're covering it from other items? No, I didn't mean Walter Fitzgerald.
I think I have to see if Miss Montal has an answer to that, because I think, I apologize, but.
It's okay if you don't, I mean, it's not something that we need to know now, because.
I don't know if you've got it now, or we need to get it.
It's not a prob, you can send it to us, but I remember, we had all received how that was being covered, and it wasn't from these maintenance projects, so I'm not sure why these would be on hold to cover Osborne Hill, if the funding was already appropriated from other line items in the budget, and then, my last thing is on the RLMS project, I know it's on hold for some whatever reason, but in reading the description of that in our budget book, and in our Q and A from last year's budget, that site, or that, I don't know how you describe it, but that, those pieces of materials, was a really lengthy description, on that they are out of compliance for use, and they are 16 years old, that our students really can't use them anymore, so I just want to clarify for anyone who's on track and field, like, that will be done by day one, as guaranteed, it's just not happening this fall, or we don't know yet still?
It's, we, I don't want to say it's not happening this fall, we could potentially It's, we, I don't want to say it's not happening this fall. We could potentially look at our numbers and say, "Let's move forwards with it." It, we, what we did is we chose a couple areas to be conservative of projects that we knew we could hold until the spring if need be. So they're not, that's why it's to be determined. We're not saying we're not doing them. We're saying we wanted to be conservative. We had the Osborne Hill issue, which we identified the funding for. But we also have winter coming up and we don't know what winter will bring. So we wanted to build a cushion in there. That's why we put those on hold. And as soon as we get through the winter months and we start to see spring and we put snow behind us, which I canceled for this year. So we're good on that. But, um, then we can actually move forwards with these projects. Again, that is one that I'm being told by the contractors that there should be no delay in doing it. They can dig them out. They can replace the old ones. They can build the new ones in. The, I'm told the only thing they have to do is provide blankets. The concrete doesn't dry, cures. So they just got to keep them warm until it dries, is what I'm told.
Okay, so it could possibly not be done, but we won't know that until after the winter.
We're, yes.
But you're hopeful. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Dwyer?
Two thousand more quarters, 17 projects. You know, occasionally we get bent out of shape because some contractor didn't do it right. We have tonight an example of a contractor that bid to do a job once and actually did it three times on their own. We have a tremendous amount of quality in our staff and our vendors who are dedicated to this district. And you ought to constantly tell them that the board is very thankful for that work.
I will definitely pass that along.
I have one question, which it's okay if you don't have the answer to it. Just the solar projects that we thought were going to happen this summer and then didn't, got delayed. Can you, do you have any information that you can share at this point? And again-
I have very little information on it. I just know that they are still moving forwards with them. You don't see them in the ground yet, but they are still working. They've, I know over at RLMS, they were, they reached out to the principal and to Mr. Hattis and asked about if they could cordon off that park parking lot for small periods of time to get the footings in the ground. And he said that that shouldn't be a problem because they don't usually fill that till mid to end of year with student drivers. So they are still moving. They, they, there was some delays with funding and projects and board approvals, but they are still moving forwards.
Okay, thank you. You are off the hot seat for now. Thank you again for everything. Racial imbalance plan update?
Okay. Um, we have, uh, we submitted our racial imbalance plan as requested by the state for their September 5th, State Board of Education meeting. Uh, we received information on Friday, the 6th, that they would like myself and our chair to attend their next meeting in October as a follow-up. Um, that, that date didn't work on my end because we had an out-of-district conference. But we are, we changed the meeting date. I believe it's November 6th. It's, it's a November meeting. Um, and Ms. Vitale and I will go to Hartford to represent the district. When I spoke with the attorney, Ms. Anastasio, around the cause for us coming back, uh, she said, "It's because everybody's new and they want to get to know us." So, um, you know, I thought lunch would work, but, um, we're going to go to, we're going to travel up there on Hartford on that day and, and answer their questions. Um, there was no specific question. I asked if there was any concerns or questions about the plan, which the state board had reviewed. And she said, "No, it was simply a matter of, of getting to know us." So my, I told her that I would reach out in a few weeks when things settled a little bit and, and have a phone call with her to kind of probe that a little bit and to see if there was anything we needed to bring in addition to the plan itself. So, um, that's where we are.
Mrs. Max Cannelli?
Uh, just briefly, can you characterize the nature of what was due to them on the 5th?
It, it was the annual update that they asked for as a result of where we are. It's pretty much a status report. Um, you know-
Despite not having October numbers, it's-
Yes. You know, we, we had, uh, we had updated, essentially when they send that letter, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, sent in June, you know, so we have some time to prepare. And, and in the past, as it was this year, we summarize, in fact, one of the last things Dr. Jones and I worked on before she left was, um, we updated the action plan. Um, so it's updated as, essentially as of the end of school year, 18, 19. Um, we will then, you know, given the fact that we'll have updated enrollment numbers, uh, as of October 1st, I can certainly bring those with them or send them in advance. But that, their, their thinking is always the end of the school year. Let me ask for that update.
And may I ask one follow-up to that, actually? And I don't know if, if in any of our data we've received this, and I apologize if I missed it. Um, what were our open choice numbers for this year?
We had 80 students. We have 80 students.
And how many were new for this year? And where did they go? Uh, uh, elementary, what level did they go?
I'd have to get you that information, the distribution.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Asa?
I don't want to come across as, I, I don't know what, how to say this, but November 6th is the day after the election. Um, so I don't know what's going to happen. And while I love having Mrs. Vitale as our chair, um, was any thought-
Are you volunteering to go?
No. But was any thought given to that, uh, in scheduling the meeting? Just curious. If the board wants to get to, I don't know. We're, we're, there's a potential for some slight changes on the board, or there's also a potential that everybody's still here.
No, it'll still be the sitting board.
Um, well, I could say from my end, um, when I asked if I tell you if the date would work, she said yes.
I think until the new board is sworn in, I think that I am still a member of this board.
I fully support you going and appreciate your efforts. And I just wanted to ask the question because some people might be wondering.
I appreciate that concern. And again, Mr. Asa, it is a valid one. If you would like to go instead, I welcome your volunteering.
I have a minivan. We might have to make a game day decision, so.
Why don't we all go?
Road trip. I know. All right. Um, any other questions on this? We will, um, you know, keep you up to date if we have any other information and we'll get you those open choice numbers. Committee liaison reports. Ms. Pitco?
Um, SEPTA is, hold on, I'm just opening up. SEPTA's next meeting is Wednesday, the 25th, September 25th. Um, it's at McKinley School, October, Wednesday, October 30th. There is another SEPTA meeting, but this time Board of Education candidates are coming, like a forum style. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Leeper?
I have a few updates from our finance committee. One goal of the finance committee this year is to improve communication between the Board of Ed and other town bodies and the public, which is something I've mentioned last year. So if anybody has any suggestions on the board or in the public or any other members of town bodies who might be watching on how we can better communicate information about our budgets and our expenditures and our planning process with you, um, please feel free to reach out. I would welcome the suggestions. Um, also, we have been working through the spring and the summer with the strategic planning committee and have had several meetings. And I have, with limited success, been trying to encourage other families in town with children who are not yet in the public school system to participate as we will be consumers of the public school system for the next many, many years. Um, but one of the possible suggestions that the strategic planning committee has raised to us on more than one occasion is the idea of levying a tax on families who utilize the public schools. And, um, I just recommend that people pay attention to the work of the strategic planning committee and make their thoughts heard.
Any question? Mrs. Max Cannelli?
Uh, just to clarify, Mrs. Leeper, that in case anyone hasn't been aware of this group, that the strategic planning committee is not a committee of the Board of Ed. It is completely, and so maybe if you could characterize their work?
Uh, yeah. So the strategic planning committee, I believe, was appointed by the Board of Selectmen and, um, is made up of volunteers from the town and have been working on developing a strategic plan. So this is a long-range plan for the town and encompasses sort of everything that the town is going to do and fund and the priorities of the town. And obviously, as anybody who pays close attention to the Board of Ed knows, the Board of Ed budget is looked at, um, closely, as it should be, because we are the largest expense this town makes. And so we are certainly not, um, outside the purview of the strategic planning committee. But they have some, uh, unique suggestions that the public might be surprised to hear if they have not to date been paying attention.
And just as a follow-up, you talk about the public paying attention. How would the public know about the details that you're referencing?
So the strategic planning committee has done a lot to try to have many forums with different groups of people. And, uh, as we know, it can be hard to get people to tune in until after a decision is already made. I don't have any dates for future strategic planning committee events, but I know that they have moved on to sort of the next phase, which is meeting with subject matter experts and engaging, uh, consulting firm in, in some of that work. So several of us were involved in a meeting specifically about education where we got to hear from a woman who works in admissions at Fairfield University who praised the preparedness of our students, which was kind of nice. But I can get some of those dates and I don't know the best way to share that information.
They do have a website also.
They do also have a website, which I think you could probably get to via our town website.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Asa?
Just to follow up on that, as a member of the finance committee, um, at the time that we had this meeting, I believe it was back in May 7th, um, when the chair and vice chair of the strategic planning committee came, um, we had a long meeting and it was, there was a lot of fruitful discussion. Um, but to, to some of the things as Mrs. Leeper mentioned, um, just, just to note that Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Leeper, myself and Dr. Jones at the time, um, strongly objected to the idea of, um, charging a fee for public education. Um, and, but that is something, as Mrs. Leeper puts out there, that it's things like that that just make you stay attention. It's not to light a fire under people and start a movement, but it's to, to tell people in the public, you know, this is a, uh, many will say is a much-needed thing for the town, a strategic plan for the town. And education is a piece of that, right? And we're a large consumer of the budget. So it, it's more than education, though. It's everything about the town. So I urge anyone watching to, um, you know, do some research, look at minutes from meetings, try and look at some of the results of the surveys online that they did. Um, because they have done a lot of hard work and they are volunteers. Um, but there's some things that may be eye-opening to people and you might want to get and, you know, start paying attention. Um, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, um, another idea that was brought up was just more exploring the public-private partnership to see how there could be, you know, potential private fundraising to support our school district and just to really to tap into the community, which is an interesting idea that I think, you know, deserves some additional follow-up and has some merit. Back to the board. Mr. Dwyer?
Sometimes, um, we ask our superintendent to correct factual errors. And I'm wondering whether we ought to let the strategic planning committee know that the state constitution mandates free public education in this state.
We made that clear.
And, uh, and if it was put in writing to them, because I'd really be upset if this town plan advanced an idea in writing that was clearly just opposite the constitution.
Mrs. Gerber?
Uh, just the, in terms of committee liaison, um, uh, I am going to send, uh, Mrs. Brown, the draft minutes from the last Mill Hill Building Committee meeting. Uh, I just got notifications this afternoon that tomorrow's meeting has been canceled. Um, but at the previous meeting, um, that was held right after our last meeting, um, there was discussion about the fact that the, um, the project does need to go before the Conservation Commission. Um, so there will be some meetings taking place this fall, um, that I don't think there's any concerns. It's simply, you know, it will add some additional time, but, so it'll kind of make the timeline a little tighter. But there can still be work taking place as they go through the process with the Conservation Commission. And I will certainly keep the board apprised as to when those meetings take place. Um, there are just a couple of questions, I guess, that arose in a meeting, um, with the head of the Conservation Department and John Fallon, who is the lawyer who was retained by the Building Committee, um, regarding, um, there are some wetlands that are on the Mill Hill site. And then there were also, there was also a question, and I wasn't totally clear on the details, so I'm, I'm going to see if I can get some more information on that regarding some of the additional parking spaces that are in the plan. But even if there has to be a slight reduction in those spaces, they'll still be within the overall parameters of what the site should be. So, and again, I will keep everyone posted and you'll get a copy of the, uh, the minutes in your Friday packet. And they're posted online as well. And then I just want to take this opportunity, um, as the Parks and Rec liaison, just to, uh, share information, because I'm trying to get this out, uh, to as many people as possible, that the Parks and Rec Commission is going to be meeting next Wednesday. And we will be reviewing and possibly voting on a new plan for the Marina, um, which will be a, uh, pretty much a rebuild of the Marina with a reduction in the number of slips, um, but an increase in a lot of different, uh, things that are been viewed as shortcomings at the Marina. Um, and it's fairly hefty price tag, um, as well. And, uh, I know the notices went out to people who are on the Marina list, but, um, I believe the people who are on the Marina list are only people who have boats at the Marina. So I'm sure there are a lot of people who may be on the waiting list, um, for the Marina who are parents in the district. So just as a heads up, there will be a meeting. It's going to be at Penfield next Wednesday at 7:00. Um, they chose Penfield in case there is, uh, large, uh, public attendance at that meeting. And that'll be Wednesday, September 18th.
Thank you. Ms. Asa?
Uh, just real quick from the Board of Health last night, um, uh, Mr. Cleary basically went through with the board. It was the first time, the first meeting since the, um, fill pile issues came up. And, um, he just recapped everything, basically. Um, no new information. Um, so that, that was it for Board of Health.
Mrs. Max Cannelli?
Um, two things. First, just as a heads up to the board, because I've been talking about this for a while, that the Policy Committee does have our final draft of the Board of Ed handbook. Um, I ask that it not be distributed for the, to the board for a first read tonight, primarily because we want to do, we've done a lot of tinkering. And so we're just double-checking all of our edits, but that you should look forward to getting this for the first, uh, read at the September meeting. And it's, and going to involve a decent amount of reading. So, you know, book your Friday night, you know, by the fireplace, whatever it leaves falling, if that's the case. But, um, so that is coming up because I've referenced it several times.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. Uh, Holland Hill Building Committee, um, the school looks beautiful. The vast majority of the, uh, of the work has been completed. Uh, we've got to take a tour following the, uh, most recent, uh, meeting, which was actually on the first day of school. Reports were the kids were all smiles coming in to see it. Uh, a lot of the work is, is really, it's, it's fantastic. Um, the things that are not complete, there are some punch list items that weren't complete. Um, obviously, the, uh, the field back where the trailer was is all torn up. The, it's going to be leveled and seeded this fall. Um, the thing that, uh, people in the neighborhood would have noticed was the work that was done on the waterline, uh, for sprinkler, sprinkler flow. Um, they had not done a, a full flow test, uh, by that meeting, but they were, they were confident that was going to be taking place soon. Um, uh, otherwise, they were going to do some work around the landscapes or repair ruts and that sort of thing. Um, but otherwise, it's good to go.
It's exciting. Great. I'll have to go check it out. Um, PT Council, they haven't had a meeting yet, but they're having their kickoff this Friday night. I think the board had all received your invitations. If you haven't RSVP'd, I'm sure they would appreciate you doing so. Sherman Building Committee, lockers were installed this, up to the very last minute. There were some lockers that were the wrong size. So the committee is working on replacing that. Um, and that's it for me. Open board comment? Ms. Leeper?
I just want to say that I am now officially a Fairfield Public School family and I am thrilled. And my little guy is normally quite stoic and he is absolutely thrilled with kindergarten so far. And every single day, it's awesome. So I just want to take a little moment to thank the Riverfield, uh, staff. It's been, uh, despite- uh, despite the field issue, it's still been seamless and, and very positive, so I'm very excited.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
Um, two quick points, first of all, I did forget to bring it with me, but I didn't know, uh, to Mr. Cummings, if you saw Fairfield Magazine, uh, which highlighted some, uh, recent Fairfield students, um, several of our high school students were recognized in the Fairfield Magazine, I will try to remember to get you that copy of that, but that's just a nice little bit of, uh, PR that I think we don't take advantage enough of, of trying to put our foot, students forward and, and really show the amazing talents in our students, so I just wanted to give that plug to Fairfield Magazine, and then I'm going to use my microphone for a little bit of a personal note, I'm very excited to announce that we have our first Odyssey of the Mine team at Mill Hill in well over a decade, and so I'll be starting my outreach to the schools as I do every fall, and, uh, but I'm very excited to have a new school onboard, just one for now, and I'm hoping for more.
Ms. Pico?
Well, I'm really excited to tell you that I just signed up as a coach.
Ms. Pico, I'm not sure where you find the hours in your day, but outstanding, anything I could do to help, let me know.
Anybody else? Okay, going to public comment. Any members of the public? Okay, seeing none, motion to adjourn. Ms. Pico, seconded by Ms. Leeper, all in favor? Oh, it's unanimous.